...of all the great things that we're doing here. And so hopefully, everyone can come out and gather any information. The flyers will be out there in front. So, thank you.
Thanks, Martin. Well, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. dedicated his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all. Whereas Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. Whereas Dr. King shared his dream of a better future for all and brought that message to Sioux Falls, actually in 1961. Over the years, his message has continued to inspire local African-American residents. Whereas the South Dakota African-American History Museum works to showcase the legacy of African-Americans in our state. Whereas the public has an opportunity to participate in a weekend celebration of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., his legacy and commitment to equality and social justice. On January 13 and 14, the city of Sioux Falls will revitalize Dr. King's dream for all." Now therefore, I, Mike Huether, Mayor of the City of Sioux Falls, do hereby proclaim the weekend of January 13 through the 16 as "Building on the Dream of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in Sioux Falls." Let's go around the parlor.
I really appreciate it. And just want to give you a quick, a brief update on what's going to happen on this weekend. On the 13th, we're doing a dinner, a free, what did I say, everybody?
Free.
Free. Something like that, yeah. Free dinner for everybody to share. You have to RSVP though. And, and so you can do it on Augie's website, you can do it through an email that's on their info@escsoufals.org, or you can email me, markblackburn@augie.edu. And that's going to be a great time to eat, and then we'll go and build the dream. And we'll talk about the workshop, we'll look at some different things that we have in our city, what we're doing well, what should we improve on, and then move forward. And then the 14th is an interface service for all. This is for everybody to come and join and move together the year 2018 in solidarity, together. Building on the dream, revitalizing, and moving forward together. We have to have each other's back, brothers and sisters, we have to love each other. So, that's going to be the 14th. So it'll be a great weekend. And the 15th, we're going to do something at Augie, so the movie of Selma. So if you feel inclined to do that, that's at 7 o'clock. Augie, 7 PM, in the Morrison Commons on that Monday. So, a lot of hosting events, it's on Facebook, social media. Please, we'll, we'll love to have you all coming. Okay? So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmembers Naitzer?
Yes.
Rolfing?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Thank you. That is passed eight to zero. Our regular agenda tonight, councilors, any motions or changes to that?
Move to approve?
Second, Urbanback.
Council Chair Kylie has made a motion.
Second, Urbanback.
Council Chair Kylie has made a motion to approve our agenda tonight, seconded by Council Urbanback. A roll call, please.
Councilmembers Naitzer?
Yes.
Rolfing?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Urbanback?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
That is also passed eight to zero. Thank you. Folks, we know it's not a large agenda tonight, but we do want to thank you for being here with us. We, we appreciate that. This is what's called the public input portion of the city council meeting. You're all invited to come up. If you've got a topic you want to discuss, just, we just ask, you come up, speak here, just give us your name, please. Speak for five minutes or less. And if you could just speak to the body, the council body as a whole versus them individually, we'd appreciate that. Anybody interested? Welcome.
I am Steven Ciano. I, I want to say I am not well physically. I was wheezing on the way to the bus stop. I have been struggling to stand due to back injuries. And I need my medical needs as a disabled veteran addressed. And the VA has proven to be unavailable and has actually taken action that was expected to cause my death, and everyone seems to go along with it. And, uh, that if they had succeeded would constitute murder, as many other veterans have died at the hands of this place and other disabled people mentally and otherwise. Part of what they did, as I've said before, and I recognize that culture plays a part in it, so you may be inclined because there is a mental aspect to my disability. It's an anxiety issue. I do recognize what's really going on with other entities, mental health, I was getting at. There is a mental health aspect, but I am certainly aware of what's going on, and my physical needs need to be addressed. I have gone for years trying to get help from people in the city when others have failed, and the city people have failed. And I've called upon you people to assert some supervision, some oversight. There has been criminal activity going on. It's easily proven when you look at the fact that I proved PTSD disability wrongly denied in 2004, and in response, somebody declared me delusional. And this has been reversed since. So it's all out there. But Falls Community Health, I was trying to get help from, and I, I have been denied case management needs. I've gone to state level, county. Uh, yeah, I'm struggling. I have bills here from, uh, Vera McKinnon, from Falls Community Health, and, uh, it's threatening me, it's harassment as I see it. I need to be protected. The city attorney has refused to help, and instead, I have been referred for counseling, which is not going to help. I have, when police were involved, I reported what was going on, and I was referred to DAV or private attorney. This is criminal. The definition of murder includes reckless disregard. You can Google it, and, uh, even if it's not intentional. And you people, I believe, do have the power to do something about, uh, Falls Community Health, city human relations. As, right outside this, this room, I picked this up, and, uh, Mayor gave it to me before. And I've got a threat, a new threat from the Department of Veteran Affairs to cut my present income. I may no longer soon have a place to stay, a roof over my head. This is a constant threat so long as this remains covered up. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Steven. Welcome.
It's Catherine, we're in Sioux Falls. So watching the press conference on Friday that was kind of hastily put together over the sighting consultant report, didn't understand why there was such a big hurry since the city had had the report, draft version for over a week. But I'm sure we'll have to wait for the consultants to be here to ask the big questions, and a lot of things that are unanswered, and what was said at the, at the press conference. And if you actually read the reports, doesn't go into a lot of detail either. But what I don't understand is that this report was commissioned by the city council and paid for by the taxpayers, $25,000. Why can't we see the draft? We paid for it. The council commissioned it. They should have a right to do that. I don't think a city attorney telling a city councillor that "You can't see the draft because you can't see the draft" is a good enough legal reason not to see it. It's baloney. That draft needs to be made public to the council and to the six, the people who paid for it. Other thing I don't understand is why the moisture check was not done. It was in the RFP, said they were going to do it. They went out there, SMG opened some closet up for them, and I considered that their check. Why was that taken out? I don't understand. They could have put endoscopes in the holes in the wall, they didn't have to tear any side off to look at that stuff. They could have went inside, they could have pulled up carpet, they could have done all kinds of things to check the moisture. They did not do that. Why? I don't know why. We'll have to ask them when they get here. But the one thing that concerns me the most, and the question that has been asked for over four years, who authorized putting flat panels on a curved building? No one seems to know the answer to that question. Somehow those panels magically showed up from the manufacturer, completely flat, and magically went up on the building by themselves. Nobody signed off on it. No contractor, no manager, no, nobody from the city, nobody from the building office, nobody. Nobody signed off on putting a flat panel. They just somehow got there. The question has been repeatedly asked, and no one wants to answer it. No one wants to take responsibility. And I'm going to tell you something, we get to hear about leadership from this city repeatedly, how we're such great leaders. Great leaders take responsibility for their actions. And whoever authorized putting those flat panels on a curved building when they knew it wasn't right, needs to take responsibility for it. Period. It is going to end up costing us millions of dollars to replace those panels over the years from the buckling and the thermal buckling. And of course, we don't know what's going on underneath because we never tested it.
Folks, did anybody else want to engage the council? Welcome.
Hello. My name's Katherine Ripple. I'm from Sioux Falls. I'm not here because I'm in a good mood. I'll tell you that right now. You're my city council. I am part of your community. Every time lately when I've gotten done a meeting here, I went home and Wednesday morning, someone else was found frozen to death on the streets. I'm an advocate for the people that are out on the streets. Alls I ask is an emergency shelter. That's not much. One little square building or one empty garage. But instead, I come here, I lay my heart out to you. I tell you of my personal life with my children have been dying, and why they've died, and who they've been friends with in town. My other son who possibly died because of grief, I myself have my balances up and down. But I've gotten through them all. I'm still here. And not gone nowhere, like it or not. Now, this meeting goes globally. Therefore, I'm going to tell you how I feel tonight. I'm not going to stand here and ask you to help those people out there because you already are aware of it. You're aiding and abetting on people dying in my streets from freezing to death. I helped to start organizations years ago, eight of them, I think it is. One of them was a safe house up on the hill by the cop station, where they're allowed to have alcohol. I asked for the police to go out and scout the streets and bring people into the shelters. They were doing it for a while. But again, I found them bad down the street from my house, sitting in an empty lot, wasting gas, waiting for an accident to happen when they should have been running around their own backyard. The man was found, what, a block away from the safe house, frozen to death. But I guess that doesn't mean anything to anybody anymore. So I'm very upset with the lies. You want me to look at you people as one body, one whole entity? Then I'm calling you liars. Because years ago, you told me you were going to fix the situation and you didn't. I'm also going to tell you I don't like your word games. You call me on the phone, you start me in your room here, and you want me to talk with you. I talk with you. And then you say, "Well, it would be nice if you speak up for the homeless and get them rides out to the banquet," after I had already enlightened some of you of my, my routine around town. But you know what happened there? When another gentleman got up to speak, he talked about heroes. He considered me a hero. I don't consider me a hero. I'm only human, I'm doing what I'm supposed to do. But I'll tell you what, you were my heroes, and you're not no more. And I don't like word games where you try and con me into getting transportation to the third pantry and give somebody else an award because they guarded right the city and pier. I don't need award for being here in Sioux Falls, for doing what I'm doing. Maybe you all get out there, sit with me at the dinner table, listen to the conversation.
Catherine, just speak in a, speak in a normal tone, you'll be just fine.
Yeah, well, what about the me grieving?
Right.
That's not fine. You didn't care that you allowed me to grieve after the last meeting?
Catherine, just please speak to the, to the council.
You know, Mayor, you let me down years ago. I helped you get into office. I'll lower my tone of voice. But I want it well known that all of you are playing in one field that's allowing people to die. You are contributing to the death of my friends. You are contributing to the people in your community to die. Shame on you all. Good night.
Folks, did anybody else want to engage the council? Welcome.
You have to keep your voices down.
My, my name is Bruce Meyer, and I hope that all of us remember all the good things that have been done by a lot of people in Sioux Falls, especially the Bishop Deadly House. I have quite an occasion to be down there a lot, and I hope that they've helped to save a lot of lives in Sioux Falls. But my hope and my purpose tonight...
Anybody else want to engage the council? Welcome.
My name is David Alkaidis, and I've got two topics for tonight. One is how people should deal with each other when they need to discuss things, and the other is, let's make a deal. It'll be fun, I guarantee. All right, so, now, when people are trying to deal with difficult topics, I see two different strategies for their discussions. The, the one method is, you know, evidence-based, the policies for the common good, and it's open, it's honest, it's scientific. And I see other cases where people try to hide their actual goals, and they do too much of appearances and not enough of the underlying substance. Two different methods. Welcome. So now, if you're going to have an evidence-based policy, you've got a rational discussion, you've got clearly stated goals, you calmly describe your evidence, you might set reputable sources, you can draw realistic conclusions. And if I happen to be the mayor here in a few months, well, we're going to see all of this all the time. On the other hand, there are some situations where I've seen, where people use rhetoric for hidden goals. These are tactics that people use to shore up weak postulates. When they don't have anything solid behind what they're trying to say, they do these kind of things. And it's often unconscious. You might use distracting emotional arguments, you can fabricate supporting evidence, make up some stories, you can insult other people. Or, now, let's look at Donald Trump and his North Korea tweets. He's trying to get everybody all riled up. But what is he doing in the background when we're all riled up about these ridiculous tweets? And sometimes here in Sioux Falls City Council, the public speakers get a little overboard, and sometimes councillors get overboard. We should try to avoid that. It's not very helpful. So, my conclusion for this little tidbit here is that we've got different tactics for different goals. We see both of these, and sometimes it's disheartening, and sometimes it's pretty cool. Now, it's been cold here lately, so I thought that we should all try to enjoy winter. That's a self-portrait on the bike trail. All right, so here's topic two. Let's make a deal. Let's suppose that you need a new truck for work. Big, solid truck. Want a crew cab, want an eight-foot bed, tandem back wheels, good solid pickup. But on the other hand, hey, maybe you talk to the salesman who wants to sell you an iconic truck instead. It's going to be twice the cost, maybe a little bit more. It's going to be a little bit smaller, regular bed, or a regular cab, short bed. Oh, and then here's the, here's the sneaky part. Vinnie, he gets to rent it cheap every Saturday. Okay, so, obviously, nobody wants a deal like that. But compare that crazy deal to the city's deal with this parking ramp. We had an estimate from the Walker Parking Professionals for $10 million. See, they decided, hey, we can double that. And then instead of getting, you know, almost 700 spaces, we got maybe 400. So it's quite a bit higher cost than what these Walker guys recommended. Now, if you want to protect your personal funds, chances are you would cancel this iconic pickup truck first chance you got. Well, I think you should deal with city funds with the same kind of protection. You should cancel this iconic parking ramp because it's so terribly expensive. Anyway, that's my opinion. Oh, hey, you got to check this out. This is pretty cool. We, I, I think, I like to enjoy color. This is a graffiti board that was officially sanctioned, and look at somebody put in the corner. Wasn't me. And with that, I bid everybody a good evening.
Did anybody else want to engage the council? Welcome. Come on up, sir. Come on up.
Hello.
Good evening.
Counsel, my name is Justin Wallam.
Justin.
Um, I got up here last week and got at the wrong time, and, but anyways, I just want to just, uh, start kind of just from the beginning, sort of, like, with the name Sioux Falls. We're famous for the falls. So, and I think that you guys have, whoever was part of revamping the falls into what it is now, um, did a good job. Um, it's just, you know, like, that's what our city is, is famous for. So, like, we have to kind of focus on, like, our humble beginnings. Like, somebody just walked upon the falls one day, like, way before all of us, and they, it started the city, um, like, with the, with the, you know, the hydroelectric power. And so we need to harness that kind of stuff in today's, with the green and everything, with everybody going green. Just kind of diversify in that sense, like, I don't know if we can still harness that hydroelectric power or not. But basically, just, um, preserve our history. We have a great history, um, with, you know, just presidents coming through here, with the Faywood Flyer, with, you know, the old courthouse museum. We just can't forget where we came from. We've come a long way, and, you know, like, we're born into where we have a lot of the, I mean, just electricity. You know, you flip a switch, I mean, people never used to have that kind of stuff. But, uh, so, that's, let's see here. You know, the people who have helped build this city, um, you know, I mean, Joe Foss is, I don't know who he is or anything like that, but, um, just, and the people today who continue to, just everyday people who just live their life with passion and, and, um, let's, you know, um, uh, there's a lot of positive things about this city that I noticed, you know, just like I've helped clean up along the river, like, just the citizens need to come together more. Um, we can't expect these, all these people up here to do everything for us. We have to do things for ourselves as well. And we just need to take care of each other. We can't always just pass the buck and just say somebody else will do it. Um, we can't, you know, don't litter. You know, I think even just that, just, we have to care about our city. We have to have respect for the people and for animals as well, you know, just everything around us. We should respect it, and it'll just, because it takes care of us, so we need to take care of it. Um, I know there's people trying, with the Greenway River Project, they're just trying to, like, clean up the river. Um, I mean, we can't drink anything other than water. And I know that the farmers need to grow crops to feed people, but I think with the pesticides and everything that get, and I hear prescription drugs are even getting into the water system. I mean, I don't know how, I'm not going to place a blame or anything, but I just know that we can, if we take a little bit more, and it might not be, it could be somebody, you know, in, just, I'm speaking to, like, everybody, like, there's got to be somebody out there that can, you know, with a, with a, a solution to the problems. So I pretty much just think that, like, whatever has happened in the past, I mean, just like with Mr. Blackburn, we can, you know, build on the dream. We can build on the dream.
Tim, stay up. I brought up a few issues last week about streetlights in my neighborhood, and the street department went a five, went around five, five-block radius in the neighborhood and found eight streetlights not working. And they said that next week, that they will get out them and get them taken care of. People have asked me, and they've called me on this one, is, the cars that were sitting around the neighborhood are gone. They had little stickies on them and white paper stating that we have called a tow truck. So they're gone. People realize that things can get done around the neighborhood if you do speak up. But there's a lot of people that don't want to speak up, they don't want to say anything. I guess that's why I'm here. Some people say I've opinionated, some people, they say that sometimes I'm off the wall. But if you don't come up here and speak, how do you get things done? Last week was a different week. If you listen to talk radio, which, talk radio, there was a couple days that we went over some of the issues that were done on Tuesday. People ask me the same questions. That when we have a report from the, on the sighting, why isn't it the city council doesn't get the real report, get the full report? People realize that if they can't get the report, the, the report from the person that, you know, that did the study, then they realize that something stinks. They're hiding something. I don't want to be negative on it, but I look at it the same way, and I have to answer that question the same way that they're asking me. That's correct. Something doesn't smell right. On the parking ramp, the same way, is when we came out and we got to have it now, but yet we can't wait a month or two to figure out what's really going on? I just, I tell everybody that you can come down here and you can talk, you can say whatever you want to say. But the problem is, it's not being listened. It's stated that, uh, sometimes the city council meetings are in a disarray. Boy, there's a reason why. Because, one, the public can't even trust what they're being told, and there, and there's no honesty. People ask me, why is it that the citizens of Sioux Falls can't figure out or can't even vote on how we do our city elections? And I told them, I said, "Because you guys aren't smart enough. You guys can't go out and elect a person with 34% because you got to have 51." So they're saying, "Well, that, that means that I can't run." And I told them, I said, "You're right." I said, "Because you can't, because of one reason. You're not going to be able to bring, bring in enough money to be able to run them." And I told them, I said, "Do you think that that was just something that was polled right out of the sky?" No, it wasn't. This thing was set up from the day that it was talked about, it was brought in front of the city council, blind-eyed, and I still think it should be brought up to the city council. I think it should be voted on again, and I really do believe that the citizens should have a, have a chance to speak. Thank you. Thank you.
Been watching the progress on the event center and several other buildings for several years, and you all know that, because I come up here and I talk about issues. But I was looking for something else today and I came across an article I wrote and had published almost four years ago. The issues I found then with the event center construction were confirmed by the city council ordered consultant's report. The report improperly released by the administration last week so it would not interfere with an important Monday announcement about little or nothing. So I wrote about this concerning the event center. Go ahead. I know the average person gets to the root of the problem we have with this building. But see if the city tries to tell us it is a style benefit to leave the building this way. There are people who allow this core structure, stud, skin, siding to happen, who are looking for someone else to blame to save their behinds. This is bad on so many levels, all starting with the architect's pen. The ripple appearance is only part of the problem. It is covering a big problem hidden beneath. In the construction trade, there are some basic rules and maxims. One, if the foundation isn't perfect, the framers can fix it. If the framing isn't perfect, the drywallers can fix it. If the drywall isn't perfect, the mutters can fix it. If the mutters didn't fix it, it's up to the trimmers to fix it. If the doors don't close, the trimmer screwed up. The homeowner may never notice until we're long gone. I started getting involved in, in construction projects when I was about eight years old, living in New York. And you would listen to these amazing craftsmen build houses. And you start learning these lessons early on. And we all know now that we have a $200 million event center that was built for $100 million. So a $200 million event center, we got on the cheap. Based on the track record of Sioux Falls building construction practices, this building in the next 15 years could reach 300 million or more in construction interest and then rebuilding costs. Think of these points as you prepare for and then talk with the consultants next week. You're here to ask questions on our behalf. You're here, that report was done, this body asked for that report to be done, and it needs to be discussed in depth here. And it doesn't matter if it takes three hours to talk about the report or four hours to talk about the report. If you got to do it again in another meeting, we have to get to the bottom of what happened with this building. But you're here on our behalf to protect our investment and to make it work. And thank you.
Folks, did anybody else want to engage the council? Very good, thank you. Item five. Anybody say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned for Sioux Falls. Make it a great night.